Good evening. The time is now 7:00 PM. I'd like to call this Board of Select meeting to order for May 13th and ask you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Thank you. And roll call. Okay.
Gaggy Gaggy.
Gaggy Gaggy.
I'd like to add one more item onto Section C. We have approved the meeting minutes for Board of Select meeting for 4/22/24. And I just pass to you another special meeting minutes. I'd like to know if it's possible to make a motion to add that to the agenda as well?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Aye. So, first one up is the 4/22/24 meeting.
Make a motion, approve the meeting minutes for 4/22/24.
And I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now for the other one, which is a special meeting we had for May 8th. Entertain a motion at this time unless you have a modification to be made.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for a special Board of Select meeting for 8th May 24.
And I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. This will be the time now if anybody wishes to speak to anything on the agenda for the Board of Select meeting for public comment. Hearing none, old business. We have to discuss and approve the resolution adopting the 2024 Northeast Council of Governments Regional Hazard and Mitigation Plan. Once again, we have nothing because the other towns have completed this. So I make a motion to table.
Make a motion to table.
By the tax elector totaling $453.74 to JP Morgan Chase Bank, N.A.
Make a motion to approve tax refunds and the $453.74.
And I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Item two, discuss an act on fair housing resolution as presented. What you have in front of you is the Fair Housing Resolution. This is something we do on a regular basis, so it isn't anything new. There's a policy behind it?
I just have one question.
Sure.
I've seen a lot of policies in my time, but never one that specifically names someone. Like, it usually says municipalities per select, but what happens after you leave it, just being a policy?
It continues on as is.
But if you're not here...
It's something we do almost every year.
Okay. So you renew this every year?
Yeah.
Alright, then I have a problem with any of those.
In that case, if you've read through?
I think it changes when there's a change.
Of the who's the?
A great writer or a Board of Select.
Right, that's usually what happens.
You also have a change in it.
Alright, that makes sense. I just never seen a policy that had actual names.
Yeah, we had Jordan before and we have someone else now who's taking over that position.
Make a motion to approve the fair housing resolution as presented.
And I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number three is a first reading. We're putting together something for a vehicle use policy. And if you've read through, we're trying to make sure that we're covered by insurance, but also making sure that we know that we're not letting everybody drive our vehicles.
Do we have a policy now?
No.
No policy?
No. We're catching up on a lot of these.
Okay. I just was wondering what the current policy was.
We've actually done a lot of it last week.
Yeah, we've done a lot of it too.
It's definitely the legal thing to let him drive our vehicles.
So I guess I can't speak to this too much because I'm just... Oh, that's right. Sorry.
Wait, do we?
Looks like you want to.
Me too.
We all are.
So as it's a first reading, I'll get you all of that next time until we go through. And there was no action for this one, so at least you understand the understanding of what the intention is for this. I'll have those full copies in your box. Armored.
Okay.
Item number four is review and act on bid proposal of the redesign of North and West parking areas for Alliance Park plans. So you'll see that there's a couple of bids in here that came through. We were trying to do a first run-through with the bids to see who's available. And they asked just to give the numbers of what's available for cost. And just a reminder that this is the issue where we're looking to stop the road going to the side and also behind us and the extended parking area behind. So that's why we're looking to get someone to come in and get a proper survey and work to be done.
And these two companies are available?
Yes. So unfortunately, what you have in front of your hands, there should be professional service agreement from Killingley Engineering. And they broke it down on one piece of paper. So it was a redesign of North and West parking for $3720. And the other company was for Archer and they had theirs at $7,600. And then the next thing we act on will be, again, Archer doing different work for the front stairs. What that is configuration is listed here on the second line of 2480. So we'll take one at a time though.
Any other question I had on this? In the design services, in closure of West Wall Street, are they working with PD for that?
We're already, I already spoke to the chief about that and what we'll be doing. So, yep. Obviously, the first few times through, you're going to have people who would forget that it's a drive-through area. So we're going to make sure we put articles in the Journal of the Times, the Orange Bulletin, put it out there for the public to understand that the road closures will occur and what to expect. We're looking to get a one-way rotation. So that way, I mean, on one side, it'll be going out the other. But we're still waiting for the planning to come through.
We put that on the website and also the...
Everything.
...places?
Everything. Yep.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Killingley Engineering Associates for $3720 for redesign of the North and West parking areas, Alliance Park plans.
And I'll second it.
Okay, motions are made. Make seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item five is, again, to review and act on a bid proposal for the reconfiguration of the new front entrance to town to make the stairs a-able to blind. And then again, you will see that Killingley put theirs on the first page. And it's reconfigured new front entrance with stairs to a-able to access. Just the engineering portion of it is for 2480, whereas Archer was 7,350.
Make a motion to accept the bid proposal from Killingley Engineering Associates for $2,480 for the front entrance reconfiguration.
And I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item six, discuss an act on a request to be added to the Economic Development Committee, which is great. We're looking for more people too. I got a list of all the different openings. But Carrie Tatro asked if it was possible, if you, I see you have a vacancy on Economic Development. I'm a registered Republican. When I switched parties, back and forth, when I was in the Housing Authority, just wanted us to know what she does, did do that. I see that as a Democrat vacancy, I'd be interested. I'm involved in local real estate and been a resident in Plainfield for almost 20 years. So this is a request from Carrie Tatro to join that.
Right. So it, but it's a Democrat vacancy. How do you do it? How do you put it?
She is changing.
Oh, she's going to change it back? Alright. So then she'll register as a Democrat and then she'll...
It's 90-day voting period.
I see.
We're voting. 90-day voting.
Okay.
Alright, I have no problem if she does what I need to.
Make a motion, add Carrie Tatro to the Economic Development Commission.
With the caveat that she does register as a Democrat.
Make amendment to this?
Amendment.
Amendment to add that.
Which ones are the definite?
She'll sit down with me.
And I'll second it.
Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item seven, discuss an act on setting a date for the town meeting approval of the additional monies needed for change orders for the police evidence shed of $54,310, pending PMZ's and Board of Finance approval. This has gone through PMZ the other day, I believe. So we're really just waiting for Board of Finance to take their action on it already?
PMZ tomorrow.
Okay, so final itemizing. So this is pending both of those. So just to remember, this is additional monies because it was change orders which are above and beyond the 160, and therefore they added the $54,000. The charter says that you can, you have to have a town meeting which adjurs to a referendum. So we anticipated having a town meeting for other items, including issues with our ordinances, issues with the sale of the town-owned cell tower, issues with using restricted funds for a, from the sale of the 120, 122 Plainfield Road to move those to Alliance Park, also to approve lease of a billboard. And that was a discussion for, again, for this town meeting. And the final one would be to approve the town Plainfield request for the additional monies needed to change order, police evidence shed of $54,000. So anything over $50,000 requires town meeting first, pending goes to a referendum. So this is our turn to do.
So it's on June 5th?
Yep.
So...
Make a motion to set the date.
Make a motion to set the town meeting date for the approval of the monies for the police evidence shed to June 5th, 2024, 6:00 Town Hall. It was at 7:00.
Yes.
And I'll second it.
Alright, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item eight, discuss an act on hold harmless agreement for easement as part of Down Road Bridge project. So, we've been trying to get easement access to four properties. There was one that was a problem, and you see it in your packet. So we worked with the attorney so he could file this hold harmless agreement. You voted this first, and I'll tell you a little bit of something else after. Just puts us in the protection so that we don't have to worry about anything being done in progress.
What if something happened?
Again, it's a whole harmless agreement and we have technical resources.
This is right of way for episodes, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
Not for us.
I was going to say it says, it says, and then it holds off.
Since the town, we have to work on that part of it to make sure that we have the agreements in place.
Alright, do we have the agreements in place?
That's the last meeting.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the hold harmless agreement for easement as part of Down Road Bridge project.
And I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, just a footnote for this. We've been hoping that that would have come in earlier. And what happened was, it was the Army Corps of Engineers who spent, after three years, then looks at the project and says, "We want to have our input into it." So it's going to hold off until next year. So I just want people to know that that's what, that's what happened. It's still going to happen. And I, my question to the Army Corps of Engineers is, when you delay a project like that, it increases the cost because labor is now more, costs you more, and also materials cost you more. So who's coming up with that money? Because we've already gone through a town meeting once to add another $300,000.
And then you get...
Yep.
That is the cost one on.
So that's just the update on that. Item number nine, discuss an act on resolution for EPA, RLF grant cooperative agreement. And you'll see that that is a...
A grant.
It's a DECD grant.
What are they going to exactly be doing to Interroyal? Assessing what's over there?
Correct. We've already been working with the state of Connecticut DECD on that project, clearing out some areas for them so they can do testing on the foundation area, do some testing on some site locations, and see what the current status is on any materials there. Every five years, you need to go back and do an assessment because what happens is, materials like this, or Command, or other sites, the materials under the ground could plume further up, which dissipates what you have in the ground on the location you're working on. So that's really what we want to do, is do the follow-up testing on that for the Brownfield municipal grant.
So we're making, just one minute, we're making an application for an additional $300,000 grant?
Yes.
To couple with the $200,000 grant, may I already have?
Yes.
Alright. So we don't have the other $3,000, $300,000 yet?
Uh, yeah. We have to do this for certain reasons.
So you do it in a process?
I believe we've already put the papers in. I know that she put them all ready to go, I guess.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the application for the $300,000 grant for Interroyal Villas Settlement Project.
Second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number 10, consider an act on appointment of Eastern Regional Tourism Board Member for Plainfield. And this is once again, our, all we have to do is make a motion and vote. We put...
You lost it?
It's been a long time.
You lost it?
Yeah, I did. It was Shannon, as our Eastern Regional Tourism Board Member. She actually approached us and said she'd like to do it.
Sorry.
We're all having a problem.
Fagan. Fagan.
Fagan, thank you. I knew what it was, I just couldn't... I make a motion to approve Shannon Fagan to the Eastern Regional Tourism as a board member from Plainfield, Representative Plainfield.
Second that.
Now, tomorrow I have to apologize for forgetting her name, so I'll take it and entertain a motion. And we have it in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Almost there. Item 11, discuss and review town of Plainfield ordinances as listed in Town Charter, Section 5.3D is an action item. We try to review them manually, although this has been an ongoing review of everything we've done. I do want to mention that I wanted to discuss those three ordinances because they were not in any of our motions from previous, but those are the things we definitely needed to do. So just a housekeeping issue here of adding those three for the town meeting.
I make a motion to approve those three ordinances for the town meeting.
Make a motion?
I think so, because I did find that other one. That's the same as 23.
Yep.
913. 9...
9 and 13?
No, 9 is repealed by 74.
So we don't have to worry about that now?
13 was not. Same as 18 was repealed by 74, but 23 was not.
And so we're going to add 13 into this list? Is that it?
Yep.
So would you find modifying that?
I will modify my motion to add to the town charter for town Plainfield ordinances to discuss, not to discuss, to add 20, ordinance 23, 65, 93, and 13?
Yep.
Alright.
And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Something to complete, and I'll get that updated. We only have a couple of things just to discuss very quickly. There's a list of all of the vacancies for Boards and Commissions that are online now. So we have Ag, Board of Ed, Building Code of Appeals.
No, Board of Ed's not vacant.
So they finally got someone?
Yes, we do.
For April?
Yes. April's been, they've appointed a person for April to the Board of Education. It was done last month.
Okay.
Give the name or?
Nope, I'm fine.
Okay, good.
Building Code Board of Appeals. Conservation is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 openings. Economic Development is 3. We just added 1, so we're down to 2. Then we've got Ethics needing 2.
When's the last time the Ethics Board met?
They haven't had to because it hasn't been anything much forward.
They only have to meet when there's an action?
Well, you know, it could be on a quarterly basis, but if there's nothing currently going on. So we'd like to fill that so they could at least start meeting and talking about what issues they'd like to...
Pick offices.
Yep.
Well, that would be, yeah.
And end dates. It should be quarterly. Housing Authority is a very difficult one because the Housing Authority, currently it says it requires a resident commissioner, but you don't have anybody that lives there, the city leaders that wants to be on. So I think that's something we can modify later on as we go. Open Space Advisory Committee, I think it's final or it is right now, but it says there's two openings. And Southern Board of Appeals, what do you, in April's position, did you fill it?
I am not aware of the Southern Board of Appeals.
So for all of those people who are here tonight who would like to volunteer for a board or commission?
A bonds.
Yeah? Okay. Or if you know of anybody, you can go online and take a look, and you'll see the list right there. The other thing I wanted to mention, we are still looking for someone to serve the Northeast District Department of Health. Rob Kier, thank you very much for your years of service. I know you said you fill in if somebody, like backup, but we're still looking for somebody to represent the town of Plainfield. We already have one other person. If you're interested or have curiosity to it, you can ask Rob and he can fill you in on what to do. What else do we have? Couple of quick things. You might as well notice on the town website today, we posted the Project Penn food pantry for Steve Ziva. He is paddling from, he's going up in Maine, paddling down 562 miles. That's why he calls it Penn Nicole 562. If anybody's interested in helping and donating, there's information there on the town website to contact him.
He also has a Facebook page.
And?
You can follow his tour.
Tour.
Play all the way down. He's going to be biking in like three days, about 75 miles. He's going to document it, and you know who'll think is along the way, all that kind of stuff. It's pretty neat to watch.
And for those interested, Plainfield's fifth annual food drive for Project Penn is June 1st here at the Town Hall from 10:00 to noon, accepting non-perishable goods, cereal products, mostly stuff for kids because with these really planes that gather all his materials in for the summertime. So that's really what's needed. The other item I wanted to mention very quickly.
Cash.
Cash as well, absolutely.
Cash is always.
So the chief mentioned to me that he is going to be able to do a transfer for monies, but he has, you can see in the package there, that's the ID card printer that is no longer working. So he has worked to try to find a couple of companies that have them. So he'll be working on getting that. And for those interested, Music in the Park just came out with their list of for the summertime. That's available without anything else.
I'll love it. So I'd just like to make a few things for the Moose Pond Association. On the 26th, we're having the Blessing of the Boats at 2:00 PM. On June 1st, we're having the cleanup of the pond at 3:00 PM. If anybody would like to come down and support, we appreciate it.
Okay. Any others to adjourn? Motion to adjourn and second?
And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Time is now 7:22. We'll go right into the next item. At 7:22, we're going to call the Special Water Pollution Control Authority meeting to order for May 13th, as this is a special, quick roll call.
Alright, Gaggy.
Kevin Cunningham?
Gaggy Gaggy.
We have them listed here as item C, to approve the minutes of the Water Pollution Control Authority meeting dated March 11th.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for March 11th, 2024.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item up is public comment. This would be the time, any of the members of the public that are here that wish to speak about anything that's on the agenda. Because when we get to that, items on the agenda, we're not doing a back-and-forth conversation. So if you have questions, this would be the time to do it, or comments that right now would be a time. Anybody from the public wishes to speak, come on up to the microphone. Okay? In that case, we go right into old business, of which there is none, and now go into new business. Number one, discuss an act on the E1 pumps and how the town, Town WPC will work in the future for future pump replacements in relationship to those responsibilities. So you have a, something in your packet already?
Mm-hmm.
Alright. So, Kay, just to be clear, you have to recuse yourself during this process?
Really?
Yes.
Alright, I'll recuse myself.
And in doing that, you have to also step out of the room over discussing.
Well, I'm a resident.
Unfortunately, you're also a voting member, and that precedes it.
So I can't be here for what goes on with my own property?
You can probably watch it on the video afterwards if you want to.
That's not right.
I'm just telling you how the process works.
It affects my property.
What we have with us is, we brought some, some of our WPCA staffing. We also have our finance director here as well, so they can talk briefly about what goes on. See if we can try to piece all this together. The Moose Pond Sewer Project was something that was put together back in January 2001. And I think at that time, they went over all the issues that were surrounding why this was a sewer project and why the upgrades. So the Northeast District Department of Health had deemed that there were some issues with the pond, and the project was born from that, trying to do a way to be able to help clean up and not continue to do any more harm to the pond. So it was a pond, I don't know if you have a copy of this one either. Okay. So it talks about basically the cost of the project. And then there was a, so this was early in the year that that whole thing was put together. There was Moose Pond Sewer Project in the town of Plainfield, which talks about multiple questions were asked, and they drafted up, pre-drafted some answers for you. 132 developed parcels at that time. So they said it for two reasons. First, the town has an indication that 75% grant was available from the USDA Rural Development Office, providing loans and grants to rural communities for sewer line expansions in areas of environmental and financial need. And secondly, the wastewater facilities plan recommends that the town extend sewers to the Moose Pond watershed. The study uncovered 14 properties that are failing septic systems in recent years, and other studies of pond indicate numerous systems do not meet present public health code and should be removed. So they talked about at that time options, cost. When it was going to start, what is a pump rinder, how long do they last? And they said at that time, way back in 2001, the average lifespan is considered to be 15 years. What would you, would you say that that would be over the years of your service and replacements? Is that accurate?
Yeah, it's accurate.
15 years?
It's accurate for normal, normal right there.
Yep. So you've gone through, oh, by the way, have all the minutes from the town meetings, the resolutions, and then that ties into everything that was done. In the current plans, the background is that you're talking about the, you know, the likely USDA loan is 20 years, how much it costs. You've been maintaining all of those rider pumps for the homeowners, and we've always, and continue to repair and replace the sewer pumps to free of cost to homeowners and tenants. We paid off the remaining interest, and now that completes the debt. So the goal of this proposal initially is to have homeowners take ownership of the pump riders on their property, that will reduce the increased cost burden to the Plainfield WPCA. The cost analysis is talking about, currently, 1E Extreme Rider Pump costs about $2,983. You've bought more than 80 pumps in the last 10 years. And in this past, previous season, 2022, 23, you replaced about 12 pumps, at a cost of $35,000. The cost of pumps has increased significantly over the last 10 years. In 2015, the cost of a pump was $1950. So that's a 34% increase, spending over more than $180,000 on E1 parts of pumps alone since 2015. That doesn't include any overtime and salary costs for investigation installation of these pumps. I would estimate that the town has spent more than $220,000 altogether over the last 10 years to maintain them. And there's also, when a sewer pump needs to be replaced, you raise one out for it inside the pump chamber, and it weighs about 80 pounds, needs to be lowered about 45 feet. And there's a handy dandy diagram of what it looks like on the inside. For after-hour call-ins, two employees are needed to get, to be paid about 4 to 4.5 hours overtime. The cost to the town for 8 to 9 hours overtime is about $543. You've estimated 2 to 3 calls happen, that 2 to 3, yeah, I gotta restart reading. 2/3 of the calls happen after hours, and you average about 12 pumps a year, estimating about per pump. Is it per pump $4,300? Is it per pump, $4,344?
No, it's about $4,344 and...
An overtime cost?
An overtime cost.
Okay. That doesn't include calls from homeowners for issues like breaking, tripper, tripping breakers, blockages of the laterals, and other non-related pump issues. So the FR Mahoney is a company that sells, installs, and does pump maintenance over these E, on pump grinder systems. Local techs who can come out and help homeowners. The 2024 rate sheet is also associated, they have technical knowledge tools and to repair. So you gave us a list of the, their services and what they cause. So what you're looking at is, how do we go forward as a town? Those pumps are, are they under warranty? You mentioned here they're under warranty.
Right, you aren't, I'm under 27 month warranty for two years.
Warranty also applies to pumps owned by RF Mahoney install. You gave us three, but I'm sure you have more options. The three that you have printed out here, I can read them. The town continues to maintain these pumps at no cost to the homeowners. The downside being that the increased cost and burden of the WPCA budget with no maintenance cost to the homeowners, there's no incentive or better care for their system. That's number one. You maintain, continue at no cost to the homeowner. Number two, the town continues to maintain the pumps and charges the homeowners for the cost and/or labor. The downside being it might be difficult to get homeowners to pay once the service is complete, since a repair might happen in the evening or on weekend when the town hall is closed. The WPCA is not equipped to repair pumps, and we currently only have options to provide them with a new pump. So it depends on what's broken and what has to be fixed. Evaluation is not at that time.
We don't have the equipment, so it's like to test and repair pumps, so the option is get one more or buy a new one. And that's pretty much all the question.
At the cost of WPCA, currently. The third item was to have the homeowners take over the ownership and maintenance of their own systems. FR Mahoney or another qualified plumber can come out and help troubleshoot any issues. They have the ability to fix certain pumps, pump parts onsite, which have a lower cost than the WPCA replacing them, replacing a whole pump. So I think we talked briefly, there could be some other options, when we do the turnover, because we're looking at a timeline of May, June of 2024, send a letter to the homeowners about any change in a policy, and July 1 being the new policy takes effect for the new fiscal year. Okay, I've read enough. Your turn.
Questions?
Yep.
How did we get here? The town's paying, do they, do we pay for other pumps around town?
No, so we don't pay for any. There are other grinder pumps around town. This is the only, you're the only small grinder pumps of town as in maintenance.
How did we get there? How did we come to maintaining that?
Because I believe the USDA loan, we did insulation, and since we were the one who extended the storming, and then at the end of the project, we actually... It wasn't the loan still, but I think the board has left at the time, wanted to continue it as well. So I was, there was concern whether it was for any of the USDA loan, but I did confirm it was USDA. There is no stipulation that we have to maintain the pumps for eternity, not in order...
It was just during the length of the loan?
I haven't even found any.
You don't have a fund?
Okay, so it was just a former administration decided to?
As far as I understand, it's former administration. I'm sort of the passiver by their passway, can't ask them anything. Look, so that's my analogy, I was just passing administration decisions.
So you mentioned you have other grinders throughout the town. So when something goes wrong with the grinder, and I'm just gonna use like first rate, there's a grinder there, you have to go out to service it or replace it. What do you do? Do you charge it?
You do not do anything. Everything is on the homeowner's property. The property line to the road, you do not do the grinder pumps or anything on the property.
Correct, since the complex on down the road, that's all private sewer pumps, you know, go there.
So if you don't have, for example, sewer grinder pumps, you don't do anything. You don't have any developments off of water avenue, that's all sewer grinder pumps, we don't maintain any of that. There's someone's throw rock, there's someone's...
That's mystic, river states.
Yep, there's someone's throw rock, there's someone's wallis. I think they have a bunch scattered throughout town. If you grab it, it's the way to go, but if you can't get the fish correctly, then people have to use the grinder pumps anywhere for it to get to a sewer. So that's how they end up in different places throughout town depending on the elevations.
You've purchased grinder pumps in the past, you have any in stock right now?
I have one, we used one of you grinder pumps in stock, right?
So depending upon how we move forward on this, if we were to say, okay, it's now on the homeowners, it's on their responsibility, how would they be able to find another E1 pump? Is it just through this company?
If our, you can run through our Mahoney, if any local plumber is interested, they can also come and help help. They have to also purchase it through a company as well. I can type the rest from our Mahoney. Eric has, right, the land, he pays for many questions from the company.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, I'm a territory man, I'm here for FR Mahoney. So in Connecticut, the state of Vermont, Western Massachusetts, we're a stocking district area, very large. We're Allison Oxford, Mass, which is only about an hour, less than an hour from here.
Forty minutes.
Yeah, we have about eight full-time service technicians that are all factory trained at the factory. E1s are made in Mistune in New York, right near hallway. They manufacture everything, panels, pumps, tanks, everything.
You have a 27 month warranty?
Yeah. The warranty covers not only parts, but field labor during regular business hours. So if a pump fails after hours on a holiday, we can charge the homeowner the difference between the daytime rate for labor. That's it. The factory pays us the regular labor rate and replace the parts if we're talking about.
And I'm looking at your flyer that you have here, just wanna make sure. You've got scrape time, you've got overtime, and holiday pay.
Correct.
So if they were able to, let's say there's a failure, they needed to call someone immediately, whether it's nighttime or holidays, obviously they're paying a higher rate, but if they're able to call you to get someone, during the weekday, you're going to this three time?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have an answering service. At 4 o'clock, the phone switches over to an answering service. The answering service knows which technicians are on call, so they'll take down the information and page or text the technician, and the technicians respond for calling the customer back.
So for the current grinders that are not on Musa Pond, if someone has a failure, what happens?
If they called us, that's how it gets on them. If I just tell a number of representative for someone who sells those pumps, can I just give them the name and number of the company that set up those?
We'll, FR Mahoney, we get stock delivery pumps too, so we'll service any manufacturer, any brand, so we...
Some of the other pumps around, I think they're a little bit... Before we brought them, if you guys decided to have the homeowners take them over, I wanted to make sure there was at least someone local. It wasn't us who could at least be able to repair these pumps, and it's a homeowner's call, and they at least have at least one phone call that they can make as well as reaching out to any local owner.
If you're able to do similar service calls like in our current WPCA, I would be happy. I mean, I think the idea is that they're worried about what happens if something breaks down on a weekend or a holiday. What's the turnaround in time?
Well, if it's on a weekend or a holiday, we'll do, if the tank is filled, then we'll respond right away.
And your service techs are aware of the location of Oxford?
We have actually two technicians that live in Plainfield.
Oh, okay.
Yes, you'll see our vans, the guys take the vans home, so you'll see the FR Mahoney van driving. What we do differently is, FR Mahoney, we will troubleshoot the unit and make a repair on site. So if it's a switch or a pump component, we'll have it on the truck, and we'll replace it. So we're not buying a new pump every single time, we're just paying for our service call and the labor. So that's typically, you know, $600, $800, depending on what we find. The other benefit to us doing it is, we have software, all our technicians have tablets, and they're required to take photographs along the way while they troubleshoot, they're documenting records. So, for example, if the unit is full of rags and wipes, we'll document that, take photos and put it in a file. We'll also tell the homeowner, if you can't put the wipes in your unit, that's the cause of your failure, is the excessive amount of wipes. For example, this is what they're cooking with.
Yep.
Right, excessive amount of cooking with. We point it out, we take photographs, and tell them, this is what the cause of, primary cause of failure was. And so, that we provide, we do some service work for other municipalities, we provide them with the reports too, especially if it's upused system.
Okay.
So we look at overall situation, is it installed to proper height, is we made the supply cable from the panel to the pump? We take pictures of the control panels, is wiring correct, is it installed correctly, is there moisture in the box? All of those little things are documented by address and by pump service.
Do you keep records of your service calls to different locations?
Sometimes we will, we have them, but there isn't much of records for past administrations.
Okay, at least you've got something to start with.
We keep an address and a phone number and a name, parts that need replacing, pump serial number. If there's anything odd, we'll document it.
And those files can be shareable if we ever decided to turn that over? Any other questions?
So if we decide to continue, I know you're my item on this, you're over budget already on the E1 pumps?
Sure.
For this year? Okay, so if you went forward, still continuing to pay for these, you would probably have to raise that, I would assume.
Right.
Okay. You know, I've read the ordinances. I have ordinance 91, like you said before, it says that anything from the road in is on the homeowner. I still don't understand why, that was written in 1988. I don't understand how it got this way, you know? When everybody else in the town that has E1 pumps has to pay for those, how it got this way around Musa Pond? I, I really don't think it's fair to the others that are paying sewer use tax, and maybe go up now to cover this burden for WPCA. So that's my take on it.
There was a comment made before about possibility of modifying the rates for just Musa Pond people that are on that grinder system?
Right.
So modify the rates and make those a little higher, so that way they cover some of it, but...
Are you gonna do that too? That one, that E1 pumps?
Again, it makes it very difficult for everybody, to be fair.
I mean, you know, I'm glad the man said he does Liberty pumps, because I have accepted, I have Liberty pump. If that fails, I have Baywood. WPCA, yeah, I've accepted, oh well, I have to save up for that, right? Same thing, any other homeowner has to save up, they know they have this pump that they need. They have to save up for any repairs or replacements, I would imagine. Any business that has an E1 pump, they have to do the same thing, right? They may have even bigger pumps, I don't know. Industry, whatever.
And again, I have to apologize, but we mentioned in the beginning of the meeting that that would be the time to ask questions or comments.
But we didn't have the information.
I know, but...
We have the answer to that question.
Once I open up the floor, I cannot bring it back, so I'm not gonna do that, I apologize.
I do, I do like the fact that this man has more chance for repairing these pumps than just replacing them.
So I do have, Stephanie, this is starting to get costly, and that's why part of your budget continues to grow. So, over the last five years, this has been noticeable, that's why you bring it to us now. And then of course, now's also the end of the bond.
So yeah, the end of the loan was coming up, I had to survive it about two years. I had to make contact with the USDA and see what their thoughts were, so to kind of write the whole, yeah, cost starting reasoning. Some of the places, or apartments that are LLCs that are for profit, we keep on having these same locations over and over again, replacing these same pumps for the people around there that make a profit as well. It's been 20 years, it's a good amount of time to caution the service to the homeowners that costs free. So I think 20 years, a good timeline to cover all the paying costs and things, so that...
So I'm gonna guess, from what I can see on the pond, there's at least that one apartment complex on the corner, tied in?
Yeah, there's at least three complexes, two or three complexes that are tied in. I'd say at least this year, we replaced two of them at one of the loans. And upstairs over there, we also replaced one complex.
Yep. They're probably the ones that are the most with all the clogs. So you see the three options that we have right now, we have all of those that might be. I think it's fair to modify and adjust rates.
Now, you probably saw this in the town, right?
Yep. I'm trying to think of a, some happy middle ground. I know we didn't speak about this, Stephanie, so I'm just gonna put it out there. If we were to make a motion so that we have the homeowners take over the ownership and maintenance of their own systems, and do it for not this fiscal year, but the following fiscal year, it would give an opportunity for the homeowners to be aware of what's going on, for one, and possibly put some money away in case they're looking to make some upgrades in the near future. I just, I just wanna short the, the rest of the town utilizing sewer, because the rate should be the rate, period. And nobody else has that special function. We bought 20 years, now it's time to start moving on to the next phase of it.
Wait, just the fault, so do you have like any of those options, like if we need more options, if we wanna adjust the timeline out, adjust the timeline out? I just wanna bring it to your attention that I think it's about time to switch over to maintenance side of the homeowners.
I said a year, but I'm not sure how your budget is starting to cost more and more every year. Obviously, you have to pay for staffing and the, you know, rates of pay increase, so that's a big factor. Parts availability, that's another one. I think with the fact that, you know, and by the way, thank you for the information. It does help, because if you do have some certified technicians in town, then I'm not worried as much about coming down from Oxford, arriving through. Our staff is here usually, let's say even if it's a middle of the night, you've got a half an hour, 45 minutes, and you're there. I've had those issues on Musa Pond, so I've heard it. We're just gonna be as supportive and receptive to not only a changeover, but also the needs of the residents, so. We have a couple of years worth there.
No, I was just looking at what, how far you're over. So if we delayed it for a year to let people prepare, you would probably have to put in for another $10,000.
Yeah, I'd say, I'd probably bring up at least $4,000.
Oh, okay.
Because you wanna make sure you're a plumber.
Because I'm already, I'm already over now, I still have a lot to add, but...
Right, so yeah. So another $15,000.
I'd say it would be on the station, I'd rather have at least $15,000.
And you can draw up that, because I know you just raised the rates not too long ago, right? Was it a year and a half, two years?
Twenty year half, yeah, a year ago.
So we're gonna have another meeting to do, setting the rates again.
All right.
Yeah, every year.
Do I feel okay with that? That I still think they should take over, just like the rest of the town?
And that's why I was thinking about a book, or whatever the year might be, one year, two year, whatever, we could make it so we can absorb it, but then still make it so that the homeowners on Musa Pond understand what they're responsible for, know that they have a system that is gonna be backed up by someone who's had the parts and materials available, plus staffing close by. know that they have a system that is going to be backed up by someone who's got the parts and materials available, plus staffing close by. And everybody else has to pay for their grinders and they pay the full rate. And if something happens on their property, they have to replace it. I don't know, it's one year or two years, I'm not sure. I'll ask Kelly what your thoughts are on that.
One year. Because when you talk about the cost of repair, it doesn't even add in for overtime, that's like the line item, so you don't see that in the budget.
Yes.
So it's a second line item, so there's overtime talk too.
Yes, I would entertain a motion, if you're comfortable with it, I'll do it. I'd entertain a motion to have the homeowners take over ownership and maintenance of their own systems. And we do that at the, not this end of this fiscal year, but the end of next fiscal year, we do that.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Very none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Item number two. Oh, yeah, number first. I'll be able to get all of his information, company, got it? Item number two, discuss an act on proposed cemetery road generator replacement. So you'll see there's a list there from Stephanie, it's a full list of all last pump replacements, and where they are located, and kilowatts. So what you're looking at is a cemetery road generator? How old is that? Is that really 48? You're replacing the north plant? So I'm just getting an idea for everybody that is listening, that the 20 years is still a long time, but at least we're starting to replace, we have it over the past few years. So this is for 48-year-old Cole. So if you wouldn't mind, you want to give us a little update on what we have available for us? Hold on just one minute, please, because I can't hear you, whatever you're talking about. Wrong way out, okay, sorry.
So it's basically a new old starter generator, he's going through it now, he offered it to us for approximately $20,000. It'll be another 20, approximately $20,000 of work to install this one, we'll all pay. Hold me, but I believe it includes the transfer switch. I haven't been able to get a cost versus move from him, because he's got a pound. Assuming he might be, he's $10,000 or more.
So what I'm going to say is, it's kind of simple, I don't want to vote on anything unless I see if he's paid.
I told him three times.
Yep. If you can give me his number, I'll see if I call him. I want to see him personally, I want to see the equipment, I want something in writing, because the board shouldn't be voting on something without a warranty on top of it.
I did ask him for a warranty, he's the only guy that's willing to give it.
And now, from your perspective, I need to know what you would estimate the, is that something that we could talk about for value? Is it $20,000? Because I know what you said, it's got a dent on the hood, the...
No, no, that was the enclosure.
Oh, that, yeah.
This is a building, so there is no...
There is no, okay. So is that worth it for that money? We're talking $20,000 for the item, we're talking $20,000 for the work, we're talking, what, anything else? $10,000 for...
It should be $20,000.
Okay. And a new transfer switch? Should be, I'm going all in writing. So I would ask that the board of waterproof control authority table, they'll ask questions now, so we can get next.
That's what I was going to ask, another question. A new generator, what would the warranty be?
Do you think that this particular item is something that you can service with staff?
These are work on Musa.
I just want to make sure we feel comfortable if we're getting something like that, that's, I know it's got one hour on it, that's it, but it is used, the warranty is a little shorter than normal, I want to make sure that we can maintain it, like any other equipment that we have.
I agree, I want to have all the information from now.
So this might not be the direction we choose, because it's an only option we're currently having.
Yep.
And you said a new would probably be about $10,000.
Yeah, on the top of our head, yes.
They only have two-year warranty?
The new one, this used one will probably come in a year.
That's what I'm saying, for $10,000 warranty, you can get a two-year warranty.
I've had to talk to another couple of vendors, try to get their prices. This is, because it's so old, we can't get certain components for it anymore. So if they have tomorrow...
It's time.
We could be, you know...
You have a small generator that might be able to handle a couple of hours, and that's about it?
We have a portable generator, right?
Yeah, that's 22-years-old, isn't it?
And that was...
The portable generator, it says it's 22-years-old.
Yeah, it's not, you know, a lot of pressure.
Okay.
Can you give me paperwork on a new, and then paperwork on him? That would be a way to compare.
Oh, yeah, you... It took me a second to get the thought back, you mentioned repairs, right? The age, what is the age of John Deere?
Fifteen?
It's 15-years-old already.
But he's one hour...
So I know as far as getting parts, it's obsolete already.
That's the question we have for the vendors.
We're hoping this came up quick, generator has failed, we're going to have to go. Can't look at, we cannot get parts for it, it's on the last leg, even though today, last year.
It failed, but it's repaired.
Yes.
Correct.
Perfect.
So your task would be to come to the next meeting with more information to help us out to decide.
If we need a test special?
Yeah, we could do that. The other question is, you think you can get that data, of course, by the end of the month? Because that's when your normal meeting would be.
I would think so.
We can ask the vendor to try to get it to us.
That's the man we got this morning, he's a house man. Sometimes it's hard soon to get this out. We can't lose thousands of people. We can't help it, it's hard to have.
It's end of the month, like the...
The 27, that would be our next meeting is 27.
We'll try to ask to get it, so I can get it.
If you can't, I want his number. So without anything else?
You make the motion to table, sorry.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Very none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? You have an item in there that's a, for just your information for right now, this is your information. This is an agreement we have with Sterling. So if you don't mind, where in here do we have to be concerned about?
I think it's section F.
Did you highlight it?
It's under plant expansion, we want to sign the plant expansion.
Yep.
For your bucks on, we get a grant loan, we have the Connecticut DPD, we get larger secondary tanks, which are for, they're a customer yield, that's kind of undersized, they're over there during tournaments. So we have two about 13-foot diameter, 50-foot diameter clarifiers. The proposal we're doing with the DPD will give us two 50-foot diameter clarifiers, so they'll double our secondary tank capacity. Question is, Sterling, they're going to be on the hook for a portion of the subgrade based on this contract.
I think it's only fair, they should be on the hook for some, but the question is not much. Is it the 80/20 split?
Of course.
It's part of the contract that talks about 80/20 splits.
Have we talked to...
Yeah, everybody's down there informing what's going on and what our concerns are, so we'll probably sit down over the next few days or so and go over what we think total would be. I know it's going to be sticker shot to Sterling, but it is what it is, we are upgrading, they know we're looking to upgrade. But we have to look forward to it.
The past few years, it's sticker shot for everybody.
Oh, yeah.
These are dedicated to the DPD elements that are paying anything to project completion. The worst that they've been for these projects, finished designing, so we would even, we're looking at this probably about two years down, two years, two years and a half down the road, for a project completion, for Sterling, two years and a half, so.
So we're upgrading this because of capacity?
Yes, because those tanks are under design, and would be sort of that sort of, I think it is.
This has started a couple of years from now, right?
The capacity should hold, most of the stones we've had, because of its large area, but not all. We've had some very bad last year or so, it's really torrential downpours, it's really, I think I've seen some pictures that you showed, which are pretty bad. All right, so at least you have the contract you read through, any questions, point out to me. I'll work with you to figure out what the cost could be to have a meeting with Sterling to go over what we just think will happen. And that's it for tonight, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So move.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, time is 8:03.